All right, it is now six P M November fourteenth. Twenty twenty-three and that means it's time for Planning Commission meeting. So want to call us all to order. Welcome everybody and thank folks for coming tonight. I'd like to go ahead and start our first item of business, which is the roll call. If we could please start off to my far left.
Deb Cameron.
Erica Harris.
Elizabeth Shin.
Scott Brown.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Welcome. Next order of business that we have, it's been a while since just our body has sat down together. And so we've got a couple of sets of minutes. To have a look at as a group. So the first one. Is the August eighth minutes, which was the last formal meeting of our body. And I want to take a moment and thank Commissioner Brown for serving as Chair Pro Tempore. And does anybody have a motion to entertain on this?
I move we approve the minutes of the August eighth meeting as written.
Commissioner Cameron moved to approve the minutes as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Shin, second. Is there any, any debate or discussion about this? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes? Raise your hand. All opposed? Like sign?
Just I wasn't present.
I think that abstentions still require a vote, do they not? Or our absences still require a vote?
Up or down?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm for.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and let the record reflect the motion carried unanimously. So on to the second set of minutes. This is the September twelfth meeting. This was the collection of bodies, but it was on the night of the Planning Commission, so we had the pleasure of, I guess, playing host, if you will. I will say I would like before we form a motion on this, I note in item five, it appears the mayor's name may be misspelled. So I would respectfully request that we we amend that and that any vote that we are motion that we entertain would include that that correction. So with all that said, is there anybody that has anything to say about this? Or can we form a motion, please?
Motion to approve the September twelfth joint meeting. As submitted with the exception of correcting Marilyn Deitch's name spelling.
All right, Commissioner Harris moved to approve with the spelling correction. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gordon seconded that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving these minutes? Please raise your hand. All opposed? Like sign. And the motion carries unanimously once again. Thank you, everybody. At this time, we have organizational procedural items, which we have recently in the past several meetings, taken the opportunity to kind of get an update. From Paul Leonhardt with regard to what may have passed through this body and what's become of it, where we are with a few things. So take it away, please, Paul. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I want to do like a very brief follow up on the cases that came before you and that were decided since then. Medical cannabis dispensaries text amendment was approved, as you've seen it. We don't have any of those kind of impermitting yet, but we have sort of interest from the companies. The rezoning forty-four seventy Shandley Dunnwoodie Road, and that's for the storage facility. That got approved. If you remember before y'all, there was a discussion around that curb cut, that southernmost curb cut closest to the highway. That one ended up not being closed. I have image here too of the changes to the the design. On the left hand side is the design, as you have seen it, city council had requested changes to that to make it more of a traditional design. What we're seeing here on the right is what ended up being approved. So that one is fundamentally the same building, the same square footage, but the design ended up changing. Compared to what y'all have seen. So if you drive by at some point after it's built and it looks different, that's that that's why. And then we had a text amendment for drive through facilities. And if you remember, the idea behind that was to make it a special land use permit. No matter what district it's in, or in all districts where it is allowed to make a special land use permit. That one was approved by the city council with small modifications. And then the fences and streambuck was text amendment. And there, the idea was to allow these by right without having to obtain the variance first, and that got approved by the council in October as well. If y'all have any questions about any of those items. Now is the time.
I just have a question about the design and the storage facility. Was there like an ordinance or something that they relied upon to change that? Or I'm just curious?
No, this is kind of similar to the site plan. We typically request elevations, we typically request sort of a design so that that a project is coming before y'all and before the city council more than just the idea of of a development. In this case, the council members sort of expressed sort of ideas for a different design. The developer was receptive. They submitted a few different proposals and then this one was the chosen one.
For the dispensary, was the distance the same of what we recommended is what the council approved?
Yeah, the the city council also had the same discussions that that y'all had more or less. And then decided to stick with the distance requirement with an eye towards you know, keep keeping an eye on it and then potentially adjusting it in the future.
Is there a way that you would recommend us approach hopping back to the storage facility? You recommend that this body approach requesting design queue changes? Or is it as simple as requesting a design queue change? I want to make sure that that we have guidance to get what what we as a city and council want, but at the same time, I want to make sure we're not overstepping. Is there is there an approach you can you can offer there?
So so it's it's typically like a good choice is sort of to just ask the developer if something like that is is negotiable or or not. It depends on the specific situation of the developer. Sometimes, you know, they are the actual sort of builder of the development. And then they can tell you exactly how easy it is to make changes to the proposed design. Sometimes they are more, you know, just like the master developer for this, but they don't have a hand in the final design, then it's truly conceptual. In this case, the applicant was also the party that was about to build those facilities and they had a couple of different facilities. In other parts of the regions, for them, it was relatively easy to swap the the sort of skin of the building with with some something else. But but that's certainly in in yours in yours purview.
Was was the discussion centered around getting them to just and you may or may not recall, getting them to kind of abandon their trade dress since it's such a in such a high profile area? Or was there was there more to the discussion than that? Because that first building looked like a storage building, looked fine, looked within our thing, but the second building, it would be easy to mistake it for being another type of
No, and it's it's it was not the material requirements. So like the first building met the material requirements, the same, you know, was high quality materials. I think it was a aesthetic preference that 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 the councilman expressed.
Okay.
And and there was not like a Georgetown overlay design or anything like that that we didn't look at?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess following on that, I I would assume that in your staff report, like had there been a overlay for Georgetown or, you know, I I assume there probably is one for Dunnwoodie Village. That you guys would note that to us and then that would kind of trigger us to to review something like the aesthetics of of the proposed development, but without the absence of that in like a small area plan or in the code. There's really nothing to go by. So what you're it sounds like what you're saying is just merely a taste of one of the council members in this case.
And and so the Georgetown Master Plan included sort of requirements for specific materials. So it asked for for high quality materials and we expressed sort of that that plan requirement. We expressed that to the developer early on. And the the new and the old proposals both both met that. So they were both in compliance with the the plan as it was. Yeah, in this case, it it truly was sort of a a request to the developer and then the developer didn't object to it. You know, they were they were happy to do that.
Okay, anything further? All right, thank you, Paul. Onto the next item of business. Is there any unfinished business for us to take up? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed to new business. We have one one big item to handle tonight, and that is review and consideration of a text amendment to amend the sign code regulations and procedures for animated signs, chapter twenty.
Yep, what we're having before before the Planning Commission tonight is a change or as an amendment to our sign code. To address animated signs and our goal with this is to have a targeted text amendment. So we don't want to sort of reopen the entire sign code. That clarifies the regulations on animated designs. I'll go into detail on why they need clarification in a moment and provide standards for those in residential districts. And you all sort of has expressed to me that that y'all know the the sort of background of this. It it is sort of a code enforcement case that we had in in the city, received a complaint on a single family property with actually lots of inflatables. Our code enforcement team went out, reviewed the code. And then issued notice of violation because in the interpretation, I wasn't allowed on the property. And then that became sort of a big community issue that was expressed to the city council and to us and overall council directed us to take a look at this and to find a way to provide a pathway for inflatables or for those types of animated signs in residential districts. And that's that's what we're bringing to you all tonight. And for that specific case, that there was a rumor out there sort of that there were citations issued or or something like that, and that that wasn't the case. Was a notice of violation, which is a a sort of I noticed that there is an issue and a request to remove it, but there is no follow up item. There's no court case. There's no fine or anything. So we just let that notice expire to allow the code change to take place and then depending on the outcome of this, we may take it up again. So overall, even though it is sort of, you know, triggered at the end of the day by by a specific by a specific case, I would encourage you all tonight to review the text amendment as general policy that is applied citywide. So it's not something to fix a specific issue at hand, but at the end of the day, we'll have to create something that that doesn't work just for specific times, but that works for the city at large. I first want to express like the the overall challenge with amendments to the sign code. And we've made sort of like a small preamble, the last time we brought sign code changes. These are tricky and they're inherently tricky because sign issues are fundamentally First Amendment issues. Because it is considered a form of expression. So it's considered a form of free speech. So we have less leeway than we do in in other items to regulate those. There's there are more protections and there's heightened scrutiny by the courts. What we generally can do, and I'll go into a bit of detail later on the presentation, is time, place and manner regulations. So we can restrict signage based on the location of it. On the specific type of signage, the the look of a sign. We can regulate the we can regulate sign materials, for instance. We can regulate the time of a sign or like how long a sign can be displays displayed. And then generally we can regulate by zoning district. We cannot regulate by specific users. So we cannot, we cannot allow one use to be sort of valued over another use, but we can regulate these by zoning district. What we generally cannot do is to regulate the message of signs. So we cannot like if we pretty much, if we have to read it to understand that it's a sign, we 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 can't do that. We cannot put restriction on who can place a sign. So for instance, a typical example is on premise was off premise signs. So we cannot restrict someone from putting only signage out that is for the specific lot. Because that would mean sort of that we would read it, you know, that's restricting one type of message over another. We cannot regulate the type of organization or like the use on the property that places a sign. And then we cannot regulate specific dates. And then uh we cannot regulate specific dates for when signs can be placed, like we can, we can set time restrictions on on a specific sign, but we cannot, we cannot um say, for instance, like during the holidays, a certain signs is allowed or during election season. These things are uh items we we cannot do and especially the billboard interests or like the the sign industry. Commercial design industry is is fairly sort of um well legally um represented, so we have to be cautious on on how we do this, we've had the items that we are proposing to you all tonight, we had those reviewed with a outside attorney as well to make sure that it's that it passes uh passes muster and doesn't cause any red flags. The the issue that we're currently having, um, we're regulating these type of um inflatables, so we're regulating um, yeah, these type of improvements that you see on the picture down there, regulating those under the term animated sign. Um, we have the definition in the code that says an animated sign means any sign that includes action or motion. But then under prohibited signs, it says animated signs, including balloons, streamers, air or gas filled figures. Signs that move mechanically as a result of human activity wherever located. And so it it speaks to that includes um, these kind of air filled figures or gas filled figures. But the question is, does it include those only if they're moving externally or does it? It's it's not sort of clearly enough worded and it put sort of our code enforcement team sort of in um, in in this issue that that they're in now. Um, so either way, it's probably something that we need to clarify. So and what what we're overall wanting to allow sort of in in the bottom pictures is like general um. Yeah, sort of inflatables of of figures on residential lots, what what we don't want to allow is to have um, those types of figures on on commercial lots. So what we're proposing to you tonight, and I've changed the order up a little bit of how it is in the code. We're having a expanded sign definition. So like animated sign means any sign that moves mechanically as a result of human activity, but it also includes balloons, streamers and air or gas filled figures. Regardless of whether the figure move this here. So regardless of whether any portion of the figure actually moves. And then also regardless of whether the figure contains any form, graphic, illumination, symbol or writing for visual communication. So we're adding sort of two items to the definition here. We're saying that uh these figures are included as part of this sign category. Whether they're sort of externally moved or not, so we're clarifying that. And then we're also clarifying that that these are always considered signs and not just if they have um a message sort of written on the sign or anything like that, so any sort of figure of this nature is considered a sign by this definition. So then we're making sort of a similar similar changes to the prohibited signs, so we're uh incorporating this definition in here. We're adding under the uh under the prohibited sign section, we're adding an exception that animated signs shall be allowed on a parcel located in a single dwelling residential district. And then the companion piece, like the the other side of the same metal is in section twenty dash thirty five. Um, signs except from permit requirements and here we're saying that animated signs in single dwelling residential zoning districts are exempt from permitting requirements. Uh, subject to the standards. So what this does in combination is it generally says that these inflatables are animated signs, number one. It says number two, that these are generally prohibited signs. With the exception of those signs in single dwelling resident residential zoning district. And then the last section down there says, if you want to put these signs up, you do not have to obtain a permit. These are signs exempt from permit requirements. We don't want to sort of in a way act as a as a um large HOA that that goes and and like permits these signs specifically, this is the same as with um with residential yard signs where people can put these up, there's specific standards to it, there's a number, there's size requirements. But people don't have to get a permit from us, people can put these out without coming for a permit. And then I have the uh specific standards listed here. Um, so it breaks it down sort of by zoning district. Um, so you have the the R zoning district, which is the single family detached zoning district and then RA is single family attached zoning district, so it's what we consider our single family residential districts, it's allowed in both of those, it is not allowed in the multifamily districts, it's not allowed in commercial districts. Um, we're having a bunch of uh sort of regulations in here. And I've broken those down, if you remember, like earlier I said kind of we can regulate things by time, place and manner. And I have this sort of broken down here um for our regulations. Um, so we're allowing those for up to sixty consecutive days, um, after they're installed. They need to be removed and cannot be installed in the same property for the the next sixty consecutive days, so these signs can be placed on a property, but they cannot become permanent. If place regulations, so this is specific to certain zoning districts. And we added a requirement that these have to be ten feet from property lines. So what this does is twofold, like one, it removes it a bit from the right of way because they can be destructive sort of to to drivers. Number two, the typical residential yard, side yard is is ten feet. And then we don't want sort of large inflatables in inside yards and close to the property line. And then uh sort of manner regulations and here we have added dimensions because these are three dimensional figures. We have sort of three dimensions of linear measurements. And we have requirements for the installation of those, that's just a requirement that these need to be installed properly and don't cause any uh only any dangers like to to the right of way or adjacent properties. Um, with this, I want to sort of conclude the the staff presentation. And I'm ready for any questions and yeah, would encourage you all to to debate this text amendment.
Okay, uh, I want to make sure that we uh before we, I'm sure we're gonna have plenty of questions and discussion, but before we do so, I want to open this up for public comment and offer uh ten minutes to anybody here who's uh wanted to speak in favor of it. Okay, uh, seeing none, we'll offer ten against. Uh, ten minutes to anybody against this, who's here to speak against. Once again, hearing none, I I think it's absolutely appropriate that we uh we ask some questions, try and hammer a few things out probably before we uh before we attempt to form a motion. So I would invite uh us to start uh on my left with Commissioner Gordon, do you have any, do you have any questions?
Yeah, we have we have general regulation in the sign code. This is like the one type of message that we don't allow if it's um offensive language in there that that is not allowed, there's like a language in there that's obscene or offensive language is not allowed. Correct.
Commissioner Cameron.
Do we have a concern that there should be a limit to the number of animated signs allowed on a property at any one time?
Yeah, that's a that's a sort of, we have good policy discussion. Like we we discussed this internally um as well and decided not to do it. Because then especially if I'm thinking as an example, the holiday season. You know, some properties can have a surprisingly large amount of signs uh out on the property, so we decided not to do one in there, but that's perfectly worthwhile for discussion, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Harris.
How are we in real, well, first of all, I've got a couple of questions, how many formal complaints have we received on yard inflatables?
We received one complaint.
Okay, and though, so the one complaint we received that initiated this on the specific Dino House?
So we've received like one formal complaint about a specific property. Uh, we received sort of once the case became sort of bigger in the media, we received sort of a few generic comments. Several in favor of the inflatables, uh several in opposition to the inflatables.
Okay, um.
We did receive during the last election, some people.
I'm certain, yeah. But those probably weren't inflatables, those were probably signs. Oh, they were inflatables, interesting, okay, um. How do we compare to other municipalities around us? What are other cities doing in terms of creating code around the this issue?
But this is in most places, it's not, it's not specifically regulated. The um, my suspicion is that in many places these things just don't have a ton of complaints because they tend to be complaint driven. And and most people don't complain about this, um. The and and this is like one of those gray areas where sometimes they're not considered signs at all. Um, that is considered uh decoration, um, in some places they are considered. What most places do is they outlaw these types of um animated signs on commercial lots and then up silence and residential.
Great, and then my follow up question to that is going to be, um, as we're moving into the holiday season. Um, it never dawned on me, for example, that the blow up reindeer, for example, um, or someone had a blow up. You know, Halloween, I've got a blow up turkey in my yard, that um it was a sign. I did not identify those as signs, it was different for me than a corporation who put on top of their building the blow up hot air balloon that said, big sale. That indicates sign to me because there's verbiage and it's conveying a written message. So so this, so this hadn't dawned on me, so as I'm starting to look at this and think through this. Um, one question I have is in regard to churches. Uh, schools regulate themselves, so I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. But churches, daycares, someone who may want to put out something festive um, for the holidays, uh synagogues, will this limit them in terms of their expression of holiday cheer or otherwise?
So this is not addressing all sorts of decoration people can put out, like this is addressing specifically inflatables and and these other referenced items.
Right.
And this only applies to a single family residential lots, so this does not apply to um, to to any of those uses that that you referenced.
So then to um to make sure I'm understanding this right, if I was a member at um Dominica Methodist Church and I wanted to have outside uh uh let's actually, let's do, um, yeah, Dominica Methodist Church, they've got the pumpkin sale going on and they have a blow up pumpkin, you know, jack o'lantern out there. Now with this code and technically before is what we're finding out, that would not be allowed.
Correct, that would not be allowed before and not be allowed now.
Okay, that's it for me right now, thank you.
Commissioner Shin.
Yeah, I also had a similar thought process of if it's only the exception is residential, that opens up to a lot of what abouts, um. So thank you for pointing that out. I wanted some clarification on the duration and the dimensions, I guess, that are outlined of what's up here. So it's sixty days on and basically sixty days off. But that's just for that one specific inflatable, so I mean, obviously if we're we're talking about the context with holidays, so it could be something you have a pumpkin for sixty days, you take it down, you put up a reindeer for sixty days, but that's a different sign in this case.
Yep, correct, so if you have a, yeah, you could alternate those, you could have like the the reindeer up for sixty days and then you could put up the pumpkin for sixty days and and so forth, yeah.
Okay, and then with the dimensions, it's twenty feet by twenty feet by twenty feet per item. I mean, I don't know of any ones that are twenty feet by twenty by twenty feet, but I could be wrong.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that that's like the, like, once I started digging into this, it's it's at the end of the day, I mean, you can purchase those online that are up to like forty feet tall, that that sort of, um, so we we put a cap in there that's pretty generous in our mind to allow like all the typical signage and then a bit more, um, but yeah.
So, and then jumping off of um Commissioner Cameron's point of the limiting the numbers, as long as there's they fit within that ten foot setback and the dimensions and the timeline, they can put as many as they want under if this gets approved.
Correct, yeah.
Which I appreciate the setback, I know that is already kind of outlined in the overall sign code with site distance and clear zone and um, the installation as far as not being distracting, um. Yeah, I think that's it, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Brown.
Right, um, I I, as far as the residential regulations, I I'm good with how everything is is laid out here, um, the I just want to get a clarification on the thing that was brought up about um churches and other institutions. So we're, I know we're, we've added it to the definition of prohibited signs, right? So can you just clarify, w- w- was it technically okay before this for churches and other institutions to have these animated or blow up um features, uh, you know, for a duration of time on their property and now with these coming in to place, now they would be prohibited?
Yeah, our position was um that it was not allowed previously, that's um that that's why we issued the notice of violation on this, uh, not because of the specific district it was in, but because it was sign type that was not allowed.
Okay, so it wasn't allowed before technically and it would continue to not be allowed for public and institutional uses.
Correct, yeah.
The only difference is now it would be allowed for single family.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just still trying to think of, you know, could that, could that cause us issues if I mean, I guess I, there wasn't a desire to have those before or we just didn't know that they were being placed on churches previously or other other institutions like that, um.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to like like speculate like on on specific properties like the, this came up the because we had a complaint sort of about a specific property. In in the years before, we haven't received complaints, um, and and this is not, oh, this hasn't been a uh enforcement priority, yeah.
Yeah, no, I I totally get the gist and I'm good with the residential regulations and everything, just kind of throwing it out there that I don't know what what happens if something comes up, but I guess probably nobody would care unless somebody, if you know, file a complaint. So I probably takes care of itself in that way, but.
Yeah, this this in. There's always that hope in especially in residential districts and in community. Um institutions, there's always that hope that people just. Do things that are generally sort of appreciated by their neighbors and that people are behaving neighborly. Um and in most of those cases, we never hear about it one way or the other because.
Yeah.
You know, most people are just like friendly with one another and and we just get pushed in between when that breaks down in some way, shape or form and. And then we'll have to find something, you know, we'll have to find exactly sort of the line, we'll have to define it.
Yeah. I I think it's a good job of trying to continue to allow the use and also put some parameters around it. And I'd be okay with moving forward with it and then if the issue happens to come up on. Public and institu- institutional uses, maybe we could address that i- if it if it were to. Become an issue. Alright, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Um I I'll keep it brief since most of what I wanted to ask has already been hit, but uh just so I'm clear. The singular complaint that was made that raised this issue to us is considered a meritorious complaint.
Sort of correct, like we issued a notice of violation like on that complaint and. We talked about this uh with the attorneys before on. Because the definition is not a hundred percent clear. So we talked about. How we could consider it and how we could interpret it and we decided um that these things that we decided. That these are, these signs are included in the current prohibition, so that they could, they're included under animated signs. They are prohibited and therefore the complaint was um had merit.
With regard to our ability to regulate. Offensive material. What does that process look like and how does that actually? Well, how does that look when it's enforced? Uh who defines offensive and how does that, how does that proceed? Because I I mean, it wouldn't be hard to believe that somebody who didn't like the idea of inflatables might try and pick something that walks that line. How does that look when we try and deal with that as it's currently drafted?
Yeah, that's that's that will be tricky because then we're getting into the realm of um of. Identifying message specifically that we ideally do not want to get into. Um we would certainly take any of those complaints serious. If someone makes a complaint that there's offensive or that there is an obscene sign out. We would, we would take this in, we would review it, um we would potentially include attorney on it. Um it, this is, we probably would have to see there's there's case law on 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 these types of things. What's what's considered um. Um what what's considered, you know, just obscene enough. Um I I don't really know. I hope we won't get in a situation where we'll have to do it. It didn't come up sort of in the the years since I've been here. It didn't come up.
I I remember at one point there being a house painted in a particularly unusual way as a function of protest. And and I'm just saying it would not surprise me. And so I want to know, do we create this environment that we're then gonna have to? Navigate, deal with, spend money on and suffer a protest inflatable?
It's in in practice, people if, I think someone put out a sign that was critical of you. Um that that in practice, people find ways to to make their displeasure known.
Sure.
Like like with or without this and in this one, um I think it was insulting. Uh request towards you and we we decided that that's the fair game, you know?
Was there any science or case law or precedent or another uh community? Used when drawing the sixty day, sixty on sixty off uh timeframes?
No, no, not really. Like we we have different requirements. We have for some of the banners, we have fourteen days, for instance. This is us trying to strike the needle between. We don't want these signs to become permanent, that someone just like places them there and then they're just always there. So we want these to remain limited duration signs. Um at the same time. We want to accommodate like the most most common users and be uh flexible sort of towards. How people intend to use these types of signs. Um but but no, it's not. There's not like um a higher science to the sixty days.
Okay, uh I understand there are more questions. So Commissioner, let's go with Commissioner Cameron.
After listening to this discussion, I have a concern that not allowing inflatables or these animated signs. Uh for instance, at a place of worship is going to be considered a limitation on free speech or. Freedom of religion. Um uh did the attorneys that the city consulted address that? And were they okay with it?
Yes, they um they were okay with that. That's even even right now, we have different requirements. We have those singled out right now and they have different requirements that are sometimes. More generous and sometimes less generous than they are for uh for commercial or for for residential districts. Um so that is something that they're comfortable with.
And are all places of worship considered commercial?
Uh we have those um in, they have different, this is kind of where. Dunwoody zoning leads us astray a little bit because we have places of worship that are zoned presidential. We have places of worship that are zoned commercial, we have places of worship that are zoned in every zoning district. Um so what we did with the sign code, we took all these users out of that and grouped them together. Because them, like a regulation by zoning district wouldn't do them justice. Because they're more similar to one another than they are to the users in the specific zoning district. So we have all those public institutional um. We have those, those users all grouped together in the sign code as a separate category.
All right, Commissioner Harris.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna do some devil's advocate type of questioning here because it's my forte. Um. First of all, Brook Run Park, we do the holiday lights there and in order uh over the last year or two. They've had blow up Hanukkah decorations there. I know we're a city, but if we were to hold to this. Code, then technically those would not be allowed for the city display anymore?
Yeah, the 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 sign code is specifically to regulate um signage on. On private property. So the city has signage in in various parts that doesn't meet the sign code. And like if you think of like the new Dunwoody welcome signage, you know, those are gonna be very large.
I under- I understand.
And and this is another one of those instances where the the city technically does not always meet the the sign code.
So we could do it at Brook Run Park, but a synagogue or a church technically couldn't based on this. Okay, um could I build and leave up year round a um. Light up metallic structure in the shape of a jack o'lantern? In my front yard without any regulation?
The um so it's it's generally. It's only and I can go to the definitions here.
No, I understand the definition. I I I shouldn't, I think what I'm, I think what I'm trying to get at is it's interesting because. I I'm trying to understand why we're regulating this. And there are a lot of things um that I have seen that are not necessarily um. What I would call beautiful, um but they stay up year round, whether they are lion statues. On someone's driveway, flanking their driveway or, you know, large pineapples, which I get it, it's a southern thing. But put on top of mailboxes, um you know, there's there's statues, there's uh there's different thing. Um color schemes on homes, someone could paint their house purple and pink and we wouldn't regulate that and that's unsightly. Um I I'm having some concern because I remember the sign. I remember the the sign discussion that we had when we created this code. And I don't think in that discussion, any of us necessarily were thinking about a holiday decoration. Or even someone who wanted to have, I don't know, like a a a blow up. Name some famous character like in their front yard or something for fun. I I don't think we were thinking about it in in that context. So part of this brings me pause because I wouldn't want to, for example, if I lived in an apartment. Keep someone who's got a family in apartment from putting on their balcony or allowing the um or. Or allowing even the um the front office to put out a blow up menorah and a blow up Santa. Outside uh for their community to enjoy, because I don't think that was the intention of this code. A- and so I'm I'm having some, I'm having some concern. I I I understand why we're having to do this. But part of me is wondering if maybe what we should do, back to the original question I asked, is how do other municipalities handle this? Should we be considering the blow up decor as decor and not as a sign? And so I feel like I might need to have that vetted out by this group a little bit more here from you all. Why we're, why we're calling those signs? Because I don't think that was the original intention in the sign code.
Yeah, our our fear is not so much uh what's going on on the residential property. Like our fear is what's going on uh on a commercial property. Like if you think in the extreme, if you think um. Uh a used car lot in uh in a far away place um that has used colors. And and then you have, if you think of like the decoration that they sometimes put out to draw attention to them. That's the aesthetic that we're trying to prevent and what we have, if we exempt. These types of items, you know, if we exempt balloons, streamers, you know, gas filled figures um. If we exempt those, if you just say like they're not signs, they're decoration, then we would have to apply it consistently to to all users. That's that's the challenge that we're running into. That's um. That that we don't want to step back and say these things are all unregulated and then anything goes sort of on on properties in the city. That's that's the um the the crux of the the matter.
Yeah, I understand that. This is, this is a challenge because I almost feel like we might be creating more problems than solving in some ways. Um a- as we think through, as we think through this in terms of. How we normally see these. Because I know Saint Luke's, for example, did have blow ups with their uh pumpkin. And I feel once we put this out, given the nature of the original complaint, that the complaint wasn't someone. My understanding um is that the complaint was not by a neighbor, a next door neighbor. Um it was really to point out. Inequity be inequity possibly in code enforcement or to. So what are we solving here? I think I just want to keep my eye on the ball.
Okay, and you know what? I I I want to just quickly share about that. I I um. I I agree and I think what we're solving here and one of the reasons Erica or Commissioner Harris that I uh. Asked the question that it is whether the complaint was meritorious is we have an issue here that I think many of us want to solve. And we're trying to solve it with the lightest touch possible. And then to Commissioner Brown's point. Should we have, we're we're fixing something that we. It was kind of a doctrine of unintended consequences thing and we're fixing it in the wake of an issue that we, well, we may, I don't know, depending on how we vote. Uh are trying to fix an issue that 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 has come up as an unintended consequence. The church issue and the related issues may represent such issues and I think that was going to your point that you raised where. Okay, if we see this issue, then let's talk about it in 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 due turn. But I don't know, I'm 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 trying to trying to argue the other side because I think we we do risk opening up a. A large can of worms here if we're not careful, but your point's well taken. So I don't know, at this point, are there any more questions? Or do we want to go ahead and uh form a motion? One more question, Commissioner Harris.
In terms of the um sixty days, from an enforcement perspective, who? Who's doing the counting? How is that enforceable? What would be the evidence required in order to actually have that be enforceable?
So in like the easiest for us from an enforcement standpoint would be if. Someone submits us a date stamped photo and typically photos have, even like if you right click on it and go in the settings, have a timestamp. You submit us um a photo of um something that is more than sixty days in the past. And then it's still out there, that that would be sufficient evidence for us.
Are there any other questions or are we ready to form a motion?
I just have a, I guess, a quick comment. I I think. I know there, it's it's a tricky situation. I think it it still comes down to somebody actually has to file a complaint. About these things for this to even come into effect. And I think we had a rare case where that happened. And we found out that we didn't quite have it addressed in the zoning code, but I I think. Maybe following on your comment on my comment about the public and institutional, I think. If someone were to file a complaint. And they had sufficient evidence and all that kind of stuff, you're still gonna get probably past the holiday season before. You even get there, so I don't. To me, to me, it's like this should still be a community issue, but now we've safeguarded ourselves because we've. Codified it, so to speak, should the issue come up again. Um I know we we're not necessarily tackling every single possible scenario that could ever come up in the community. But I think it's a good. It's a good stab at trying to allow these uses while also setting some parameters in case the issue comes up again. So I don't, I don't. But I I think the objective is not to consider every single potential scenario that's out there, but I think to at least. Uh try to address it and I think they have, um you know, something may come up in the future, but. I would feel okay with this moving forward uh if. That's what we decide.
Alright, any other comments or questions or are we ready to uh form a motion?
I just want, Commissioner, I wonder if we could noodle on one quick thing. Um in terms of the sixty days on and the sixty days off and and creating. More bureaucracy, um. I I wonder if, given that we're dealing with residential and people's lots. And I go back to like, what is our intention? What is our purpose? If somebody has something blown up in their yard and a neighbor doesn't like it, then. My encouragement to the neighbor would be like, hey, talk to your neighbor. Do we need to act as a de facto? Um homeowners association to limit that because we don't limit how people paint their homes. We wouldn't limit a statue that they would put in their front yard. Uh we we tend to keep our hands out of that. And so for me, I'm not sure limiting the um. Limiting the use in terms of sixty days on, sixty days off is something that we necessarily should be putting our fingers in that pie. Um I'm open to your thoughts on that.
I'm gonna argue the either other side of that and then again, because this complaint was with merit, our fingers are in that pie. And it necessarily, if that complaint is given merit, then it means nobody can have a blow up in their yard.
I'm sorry, I mean the sixty days on, sixty days off.
Okay.
Yeah, specifically, this this, yeah, specifically the sixty days on, sixty days off. If we if we need to, I'm I'm arguing, yes, allow the blow ups in the residential, but do we need to? Do we need to go further and then create more bureaucracy around allowing the blow ups there?
Okay, so you're suggesting that the issue was was the the time aspect of that, okay? Um is there, are there any other questions or discussion or can we go ahead and? Um, is there? Are there any other questions or discussion, or can we go ahead and uh form a motion?
Well, just in response to Commissioner Harris's comment, I. I think that what they're trying to do is to let. People keep their inflatables up for. Enough time, but not too much. That's my understanding of the. Sixty day time constraint.
I concur with that.
Okay, is there a motion, please?
I'll put a motion out, but it's gonna be it's gonna be based on what I what I would recommend. Um. I recommend adopting the. The amendment of the sign code regulations and procedures for animated signs, chapter twenty, with. The um exclusion of the sixty days on, sixty days off. Instead, I would strike any time limitations.
Okay, so what I heard Commissioner Harris say uh is an approval. Uh, however, with the element of uh. Trying to look for a citation here.
Duration allowed for sixty consecutive days.
The e- element of durations. Stricken uh, the 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 time duration stricken. So as is except for the striking of the time. Okay, did I restate your motion correctly? Okay, uh, hearing a motion, is there a second to that motion? Alright, seeing no second, is there somebody who would like to present another motion? Or the the motion fails. Can we present another motion, please?
I move that we adopt the amendment to the sign ordinance. As presented.
Okay, Commissioner Cameron. Has moved to approve the sign ordinance as presented to us. Did I restate your motion correctly? Okay. Uh, having that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Heard a second uh from Commissioner Brown. Uh, at this time, we have an emotion and a second, so at this time, we'll uh open up the floor for debate. Is there any debate, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor of passing the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. And the motion carries. I'll make sure I have my numbers right, six to one, five to one. Thank you. Uh, alright, with that said. We'll move on to any other business. Is there any other business? Uh, at this time, is there any public comment? Looks like a fairly empty public tonight. Um. Commission comment, any commission comment at this point?
I just want to share that I I. I'm concerned, I hope that this does not uh. Relay into a larger issue for us. Um, because I think that we have good intentions, but with good intentions in any regulation creates challenges. Um. And so. I maybe start to noodle on how we could be more inclusive with this in terms of allowing. Our religious institutions and daycares or whatnot opportunity to uh utilize blowups. Um, for the purpose that we've traditionally seen them used, uh, and also in terms of the um. I I want to just make a point, the reason why. I personally am not for the sixty days on, sixty days off is because I see it as. The type of regulation that puts more wear and tear on city staff that should otherwise be left to a homeowner to work with their neighbor on. And I would like to see that be the first step. That um as neighbors, we communicate with each other and we don't have to necessarily pull in um. The city to. To communicate and and make change, neighborly change.
Any other comment? Hearing none, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. That was one hour on the on the nose. Wow, alright. So. I until this conversation.